I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, guys. We will move to approval of the agenda.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
For, um, just as this discussion will strike, old business items one and two, they have been pushed to September. First and the second, any additional discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Oppose? Move to citizens' comments.
We have none tonight.
Thank you, sir. Approval minutes? We have no minutes. We'll have, uh, double minutes next month. So we'll get these, those minutes from last month at the next meeting. New business, number one, site plan, innovative lawns, property located Highway ninety-six north, map eighteen, parcel forty-seven point zero-nine, commercial general zoning district property owned by R. Eric Grisham. And if staff have any comments for us? Or updates there?
Uh, if you remember, this was brought for us last month. Uh, we have been back and forth with the owner as well as engineer. Uh, they have submitted, uh, those plans to us. And there were a couple of little things, but I believe that they will be dealt with during the, um, pre-con, uh, things such as other permits that they have to get and so forth, that they need this approval before they go forth with that. Okay, was there anything else that they had on that?
I didn't have anything else. It was just a couple of things, um, construction permit that comes in with, uh, prior to moving or doing earthwork, um, the sign. Time for that, some, um, no technical information for the retaining wall, um, all things that can be done.
With that, the staff does make a good recommendation for this project.
Sir? And we do have Mr. Grisham here, correct?
Yes, sir.
Welcome. You have anything like to say? Welcome to...
Um, no, I'm, I'm sorry, I don't know with this, so I don't know everything that this process really entails, but, uh, I know that we're gonna make every effort to, you know, meet any requirements you guys have. We're not looking to cut any corners or do anything. We're looking to be a part of the business community here in Fairview, and we've been in business since nineteen ninety-eight, and we're looking forward to this. This is a big investment for my wife and I, um, and, you know, um, to relocate here, and, uh, we're just really excited to get started. Any permits or any things left on the table? I think some of those items, we've already, uh, our engineer, Trent, has already got those taken care of, and we're, if they hadn't been submitted, they're ready to go. And we're just looking forward to, uh, going through the process and anything required at the individual permitting from building or grading, we'll definitely have that for you guys at that point. Right now, we're just excited and anxious, you know, we just wanna get started with this. Questions from anything that I can answer, any concerns about our plans or what we're looking to do? I'm, I'm happy to answer those.
Sir? Do we have any questions for the applicant?
Mr. Grisham?
Yes.
Um, you see, you've been in business since nineteen ninety-eight?
Yes.
Landscaping the whole time?
Yes.
Is this your first headquarters, like, that you're building like this, where it's new construction and it's your baby?
Uh, we've leased properties.
Okay.
And, and just rented and rented and rented and, and, um, this is something that we've dreamt of, we've talked about, and, um, you know, something we wish we would've done earlier.
Yeah.
But, you know, we, about a year ago, we said, look, we're not getting any younger, and if we're gonna do this, let's do it, and we, and we decided, let's buy a property and make it everything we've ever wanted.
That's awesome.
For displaying for customers, to do demonstrations of irrigation function and lighting, and have beautiful displays and our landscape, I think that was one of the, uh, items that has come up. And I personally, in this, have, I'm not an architect, I have a business degree, but honestly, at the time, I didn't know, I was doing landscaping, but I didn't know this was honestly gonna be my career. And so I graduated with a business degree, had known I would've become an architect. But, um, I've been doing landscape design and installation for over twenty years, and, um, I feel like I'm as qualified as anybody when it comes to this. We do it in real world, we've in, installed billions and millions of dollars of landscape between all these years. So any concerns with the, what we're planning on doing with the landscape to make it a beautiful, uh, site, for ourselves, for the community, and for our customers? I'm happy to, to clarify anything with that also. But, yes, this is gonna be our, uh, biggest investment we've ever made, and, uh, we're excited and we're ready to, we're ready to do it.
Cool. Congratulations to the two of you. That's exciting.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, and you guys do have to have the prettiest lot out there. I mean, you can't be a landscaping company.
No, it has to be. Um, you know, that's, that's gonna be, uh, you know, the places we've leased up until now was, we never, it was never for the public.
Yes.
It's for our guys, our trucks, our equipment, and this is something that, that was the point. We want a place our customers can come to, look, touch, feel. They can see the plants that are gonna go in the ground, we don't just show up with them. They can see the patios we install and the, we can demo irrigation systems that we install and give them something. So it's gotta, it's gotta look good, or else...
That's awesome.
We're not gonna impress anybody, but we feel very confident.
Best of luck to the two of you.
Thank you very much.
Yeah.
What areas do you all primarily service?
Williamson County. Um, our, we've always leased our properties in Davidson County, but our work has always been in Brentwood and Franklin. Fortunately, the, through high school and college, I worked for a landscaping irrigation contractor, and he is one of the first irrigation companies in the area, uh, started in the seventies. And, um, his clientele base was higher-end customers that installed irrigation in Brentwood and Franklin. And so fortunately for me, when he retired and I saw this was the path I was gonna go down, I kinda inherited a lot of those customers and, um, had been able to focus my business in those areas. So, um, it's, you know, part of the picking this property before we purchased it, I did a lot of, I'd go there and sit and then drive to different points of our customer base and job sites that we work at, and a lot of them are twenty-minute drive. And, you know, where we are now for the last eight years, it used to be a twenty-minute drive, but now it's got so ridiculous with traffic, that has turned to an hour and a half drive for our crews, and it just doesn't make sense. And so this location is just ideal, at the proximity to our clientele and our customer base. And, you know, hopefully, we're gonna build a good customer base in Fairview. I mean, that's the goal also, is not to, you know, that would be very convenient. Excited about it.
Yeah.
Welcome to Fairview.
Thank you very much.
Questions? Or you'd like to make a motion?
Motion to approve.
Aye.
Burke's power? Any additional discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
You oppose? Thank you, guys, very much.
Thank you.
Item two, new business, final plat, Sweetbry Springs, phase two, property located on Sweetbry Lane, map twenty-two, parcel eighteen, R-20 zoning district, property owned by Marlin Cunningham. Cunningham's present. Staff, you have anything for us?
Yes, Mr. Butler, members of the commission, we, um, one primary concern that I'm aware of, and the staff may, or Mr. Blackman may chime in, we have, we do have one question before you, and I, um, everything else, as I understand, is fairly straightforward. One of the questions we have, uh, is relates to lot number eighteen A, as is the document you have in front of you. If you're looking at the document, it is, uh, at the far right corner, it's the largest lot. At the little small cul-de-sac thing that you, that you see in the top, in the top right, you'll see the larger, the largest lot there. That lot is number eighteen A. Our concern with lot eighteen A as it exists is that it encompasses residential construction and a detention pond. The largest portion of that lot, and it looks like, it's the flag lot there on the right-hand side, the largest portion of it would be the detention pond, and this area to the back of the lot would be, um, where a home would be built. We do have some concern specifically about that lot, where the detention pond would be a part of a residential lot, in that the homeowner would be responsible for that detention pond. They also would be able to manipulate that lot as they saw fit, given the fact that they are the owner of it. So there is some concern there. I've expressed this through email to Mr. Cunningham, he has sent a document back, and I met with him today, and I just wanna provide you the document that I got from him, so we all understand where we are in this thing. He and I had a great discussion today regarding this, and the only question was, uh, the creation of that lot as you see it. He, he, he did state that there was a conversation that took place between, um, himself, Kristin Castanza, who was here, and Will Owen, who was the engineer at the time. Uh, there was, the document that I provided you is our meeting notes from, um, June twenty-six, two thousand eighteen. And in the additional notes section, I'll, I'll simply read that. It states that contractor desires to create one additional lot that would be comprised of the detention pond between lots eighteen and nineteen, and a portion of lot number eighteen, or the southeastern portion, as is depicted. Planning director to advise contractor on required procedure to accomplish said desire, but city engineer and planning director did not identify any obstacles to accomplishing desire to add one lot as long as proper procedure is followed. I can, I cannot assert to you whether tonight proper procedure was or was not followed, that's not our, our concern tonight. The, the concern specifically is the detention pond being part of a residential lot. Mr. Cunningham can likely speak, um, in greater detail to that meeting and those specific discussions that took place. What I can tell you is that lot, as it's drawn, is not, um, reflected in the construction plans. The construction plans show the detention lot, detention pond as a separate lot, which I assume is what was discussed in the original conversation. So absent of any other matters before, or to be brought up by the, the staff and engineer, our primary concern is that specific lot. We would like to see that lot be a non-residential lot and be a detention pond lot only, however that could be. There, outside of that, I'm not aware of any substantive, um, issues that the city has regarding the item before you tonight.
So who maintains it if it's not a, um, owned property? If there's no HOA or no...
If, if there's no HOA, then at this point, it would be, um, Mr. Cunningham or his assigns after that. If, if there's no HOA, then developer, owner, his assigns after, um, after that would own, would operate it, just as you would any other detention pond i- in a subdivision where there's no HOA management or ownership. In, in this case, um, if it was approved as is presented, then the concern would be that that would be at the discretion of the residential lot owner. And, and that's, that's our primary concern, for the, for the function of the detention pond and the future maintenance of the detention pond.
Does the detention pond have to be inspected annually, biannually?
It has to be maintained, it would not have to be inspected. Now, if there was some concern that it didn't function properly, meaning if there was a future claim that it didn't function, it did not function as designed or constructed, then it would be the owner of the detention pond's responsibility to make that repair. In this case, that would be, fall on the homeowner or, uh, Mr. Cunningham or the HOA. An inspection, no. A failure, yes, it would be the responsibility of the person who, or entity who owns it to make that repair.
My question is, if the homeowner doesn't own it, the city doesn't own it, Mr. Cunningham does own it, what happens when he passes and these people still live there?
There, there would be an assigned, assigned ownership after that in, in some form, where it wouldn't just simply be able to go away. I mean, worst case, it would be his estate. Or, or some, some other management form of that. The city would not, the city would not own it.
What, what type of action would the city be able to take if they just let it go and had no maintenance on it? We require maintenance, we would...
In that point, you just, Mr. Potter can answer that, but at some point, we would have to handle that. The, the, the group that would have the greatest, um, ability to enforce any action on that would be the adjoining property owners, or the ones who are originally designed to be served by the detention pond. If it became a public health hazard in some such way that the city had to take ownership or, or take responsibility for that, then we would do that through a legal action, not through an ownership matter for the city.
I think that's the worrisome part, is somehow the city of Fairview has taken on properties like that prior. And then there's a lot of neighborhoods that are served like this. So I, I guess in future discussions, we need to decide if we need language that prohibits this. Cause I know there's other neighborhoods like this, but you just project it, does it end up coming back to the city as maintenance and it becomes our headache?
Correct.
Does he pay taxes on it equal to the, the residential lots, or does he pay taxes on it as a retention pond? What does, how does that...
He would pay the standard property tax rate?
Mr. Potter? You'd be the one to answer this, I guess. If the property owner doesn't maintain it, it gets chock full of whatever, such that it fails and floods over into someone else's home, who's liable for that? That property owner? For that damage?
Yes, they would be. As, as to, that would have recourse against the person they would allow.
That, that brings me to a question I had on another subdivision. There's a difference between a drainage easement and a drainage right-of-way. And so now we got a lot, if it's a drainage easement, then the city would be responsible for the maintaining of a drainage easement. I think I'm correct. And then if it's a drainage, uh, right-of-way, who, who, who gets that? Now, uh, when we have stormwater, uh, the, the city's responsible for a lot of stormwater issues here.
The easements would be the ownership of the city if, in fact, the city required the easements as a part of the subdivision approval in the future ownership of that. In this case, there is no requirement of an easement for that, and the city would not be held to that standard.
That's fifty-two cities, yes, the, the power, the easement, who are responsible for, could be responsible.
Right, but in, in land use, if you gotta drain these right-of-way, that, that, across a person's property, that person can't do anything to interfere with that. Like, put a fence up or block it off. But if you have a drainage right-of-way, then you can put a fence up as long as you don't inhibit the water. So there are two different animals there, the way it's written, and this one, to me, sounds confusing, and I don't like the way that, uh, I don't want the city to own it, but I don't want, uh, a homeowner sitting there in ten years, he passes and his estate, uh, defuncts or whatever, they all move to Georgia, and nobody takes care of this thing. And that's where I see it going.
Ultimately, that responsibility, ultimately, the, the person responsible for that is gonna be the deed holder. Whoever's the name the deed is in is who, is gonna have to be ultimately responsible for the management of that site, in some form.
That's a piece of property they could never sell.
Should, we would intend that not be sold, I mean, it's, the purpose of it is detention pond.
Yeah, that, that's a can of worms, in my opinion.
Mr. Cunningham, would you be the deed holder in this instance? Do you own this property, this lot?
To my opinion, this was an error by the engineer when he drew it up this way to start with. I, I know I've done some subdivisions in the past, Kyle's Creek, for an example, has got two detention ponds right, you know where I'm talking about, at the bottom street down there. On the upper side, there's two detention ponds there. And those belong to the homeowners there, there's no common area there. And they keep them mowed, and to my knowledge, there's not been any trouble with either one of those. Western Wood, for an example, there's one over there that the homeowner owns the detention pond. I mean, so it's, it's different ones that's that way in town, that's... In other words, this is not the first time this has happened.
What hap...
I'm, I'm sorry.
Sorry. What happens if the deed holder defaults on their tax, ta, like, property taxes down the road?
We would handle it as we would any other default, you just go through the collection process for their, for their property. It would be no different whether it was a home or a business or detention pond.
So at some point, would there be the possibility of repossessing that, like, taking control of that piece?
We would not want to do, we would not want to take control of it under any circumstance.
Sure.
This seems very similar to the discussion we had, I think it was with Red Bud Springs, with the detainer, or I guess it was a detainer pond, and the retaining wall, or detention pond, whichever it was. Those are some issues we had with that ish, with whatever lot it was, it was gonna belong to one of these owners. We felt, you know, maybe unsuspecting. You know, they may look at it as great, hey, there's a water feature on my land, it's a pond, woo, until they realize what that is and the liability that comes with that. And I know we had, as a board, had issues with that, and it seems to be the very same thing. I would be concerned that neighbors are gonna have to go after a person who owns a house because of a pond. You know, if, if it's a catastrophic failure. And how do we enforce a fix on that? When they can just say, hey, bankruptcy, I'm done, out, see ya. Then what do we do? It seems like, I know we don't own it as the city, but it always comes back to, hey, y'all approved this, y'all need to fix this, we're the ones who are getting yelled at, we're the ones who get the emails and the nasty phone calls, why aren't you fixing this pond? It's nice to be able to point at someone else for once and say, yep, it's not ours, it's this person. Versus a homeowner who can just get out of there. So...
I could, this is what I would be open to do, to, to fix this problem. If I needed to, uh, if I could have that lot, that flag lot, I'm gonna call it a flag lot, on that lot eighteen A, I will create a homeowners association for this neighborhood that'll correct, that'll fix this problem. And if I can have that lot right there, I'll make that happen, and let that be cut off from, cause that lot's huge. And like I said, the engineer that was working with me on this, that, this is not what I expected to see when I, uh, this right here is, but not the original one that had the detention pond on a lot by itself. Cause I told him, I said, this is no man's land. I've been there, done that before, and it's, it's an issue, I understand that. But if I have a homeowners association that'll help take care of that and fix that problem, that's what we're looking for. And I, I don't have a problem in doing that.
And what happens when the homeowners association dissolves two years later? It's, is, is the same... Passes the buck.
It's the same battle, but, but, I mean, that's every neighborhood.
The difference in that, the difference in that stamp, in that scenario is, and let's assume for purposes of this conversation, from what I just heard from Mr. Cunningham, unless I heard something different, that lot eighteen A would no longer become a residential lot, it would simply be a detention pond lot, absent of any home or structure, and the HOA created would individually or collectively own lot eighteen A. Is that my understanding of that?
They would own the detention pond eighteen, I'm calling it eighteen B. Uh, let me take that back. I'm so confused now with what my engineer's done. And I can't see up there.
Right now, the detention pond's part of eighteen as a whole, right?
Alright, there's lot eighteen, there's lot eighteen A. Yeah, he created lot eighteen, eighteen A, which is the pond and the building site, which was all combined as one. If I cut that detention pond off of, in other words, have a flag lot there, that'd be lot eighteen A, and the detention area would be common area at that point. You see what I'm talking about?
As, as long as it met the design standard for the driveway and access and other thing, we would not be opposed to that.
I think that would probably be an easy fix to be able to make that work, cause it's plenty of room on that side to make that work. And, and that's a odd situation that I had there, but that's what he drew in to fix it. And also, uh, Will Owen, when we were sitting in the pre-construction meeting, I'd brought that up to him about what to do, or what, what would be my options, and we were scaling everything off, or he did, and that's what he come up with, basically what you see there. But I'd have that pond issue, but if I did a homeowners association, I can correct that.
Is there any part of that, uh, pond area where, uh, some plate stuff could be put on it that could be used?
Maybe a little bit up at the front of it, but see, I got the, also, there's the pump station up to the left-hand side of it.
We, we would all, is that, we would also respectfully request that that not be done for the simple purpose of not having the detention pond become an attractant to youth or other kids, or some other way to do that. The purpose would be to make sure that it's not done in that way. So, um, effectively, the conversation is, lot eighteen A as it exists would exist, and the portion, the backside of that would become effectively lot eighteen B, which would be a residential lot subject to the zoning or the subdivision as it's laid out. And then there'd be an HOA corrected for the ownership of the detention pond. In such case, the default would be default of the entire HOA, where every property in the subdivision would be subject to their percentage ownership of any liability, as I understand it.
And it's on the plat, I've gotta fix it also, so that...
Staff would be okay with that?
Yes, sir.
That would suffice. Is that something that we could, um, approve now contingent, and staff handling that, or do you wanna see the revision?
I, in that case, is, if they were, if you were to prove a contingent upon those, we would simply report back to you at the next meeting whether or not it had been drawn to standard. If it had, then we would move forward, if not, we would take that back to you.
And we would have to sign the final plat, so we'd have a chance to review.
Yes, sir, that's correct.
The final.
Is there any way that we could, uh, I, I've really been on this for a while, as you all know, and I know I, I created the issue with the curbs. I created that, but I fixed it at this point. But I've been four months trying to, to get this thing to a closure. If we could, if I could get a vote on approving it or not approving it, and with contingency on me changing what we're talking about on the plat, to where I could get it recorded quicker, instead of waiting another month, it would really help me. Cause I mean, I'm, the interest on this thing, with everything I've spent on top of the curbs and everything else I've done, it's really, uh, it's starting to hurt at this point.
Mr. Cunningham, I appreciate you proposing a solution. You know, you came to this thing and said, hey, I'd be willing to do an HOA and have everybody take care of it. And the way I see it, the stakeholders, the direct stakeholders of a retention pond aren't just the one lot owner, it's the entire, it's in the entire neighborhood, right? It's the entire subdivision there. So to put all that responsibility on that one lot, I don't know, it wouldn't make any sense to me. So I love the fact that you're doing, you're proposing an HOA, that makes sense to me. So, yeah, I mean, the one thing that I noticed here is, there's really, really tiny writing, there's a whole, like, section of bullet points there at the bottom on the left-hand side of the document. And that's, I read it earlier today, and it's essentially a maintenance schedule for the detention bond. How could we make sure that the HOA, if this gets passed through and the HOA owns that and is responsible for maintaining it, that follows the maintenance schedule that you've written out here in the plans?
It's on their deed, on their plat?
It's, it's on the plat.
We don't have an enforcement ability, it would simply be the other members of the HOA we require for enforcement.
And it would give them guidance too, though. Like, they could hire a landscaping company to, to come out and make sure that, hey, this is done on these intervals. And if there's a heavy rain, come out, check it out, inspect it, get it taken care of. Seems like an easy solution. Yeah.
Kevin, I have a question for you. With the topography between eighteen and eighteen A going so deeply down into that detention, if that back flag lot does become a lot, will we need to review construction plans on what that wall will be, since it will be a driveway uptight to that, that property line?
Yeah, we'll definitely need to look at that with, with the next and middle and, and make sure that, that along with access, because right now, it's showing fifteen feet, getting back in there. Just making sure that all of that meets the standards and, um, of access, and making sure that the grades are properly accounted for and that retaining walls...
And, and the protection of that is that this will have to be signed off as, as a plat, so it will have to come back to a representative of the planning commission prior to any formal acceptance. acceptance.
So with us accepting it with contingency on our, our staff, making sure these things are done, it still has to come back here. It just allows him to-
It will have to be signed off. If it meets that, if, if that document is provided and it does meet those things, with the approval tonight, the plat will still have to be signed by the, by Chair of the Planning Commission and the Secretary of the Planning Commission. Absent those two signatures, I would bring that right back to the board, because in that case, cannot be filed. This is an incomplete subdivision, until those signatures are obtained.
And they couldn't be obtained until these two guys know that the contingencies have been met.
Yes, sir.
Until staff tells us that they're satisfied.
Yes, sir.
I'm going to make a shot at this here. I make a motion to approve contingent upon this 18A being turned into a flag lot with the detention pond as a separate lot, which I guess would be, we'd have 18C, or however that wants to be numbered. And that, that additional lot also be contingent upon approval by the city engineer and the staff to make sure it does meet all the requirements, particularly if you have to put in a wall. There you go.
I would like to second that motion.
Mention the homeowners association.
Thank you.
I'll recall my second.
I'll amend that to also include that there'd be a homeowners association created to own the detention pond.
Comfortable with that? Second?
I'll second.
Sullivan, can you repeat that?
Ms. Hall? Any additional discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you, Mr. Cunningham.
Thank you.
New business item three, final plat, Randall Enman subdivision, property located at 2655 Fairview Boulevard, map 69, parcel 31, RS 40, Commercial General Zoning District, property owned by Randall C. Enman.
There we go. This is a odd plat. Whenever it was first presented to us, we looked at it, and currently, the three lots make up one. That one lot has both CG and RS 40 zoning currently. The applicant has asked to subdivide that into three lots. In doing so, each lot under the first submission still had dual zoning for each one. They have since brought back this submission that shows the top corner lot being one as RS 40, and then lots two and three both being CG, Commercial General. Under this board's purview, you cannot do the zoning, but the Board of Commissioners cannot do rezoning without Planning Commission giving the actual lot lines. At that point, the Board of Commissioners would be going to imaginary points. Can't be doing that. So this is being presented tonight for a vote that will only be passed with Board of Commissioners going forward with the rezoning. So it will be a contingency on that vote, and once that vote is passed for the three individual lots being rezoned, the subdivision will be, will be platted at that point. Did I miss anything, Kevin?
The only thing that I would add is that, as you can see along the King Road frontage and the State Route 100 on the Lot 1 there, there's not any, there's not a drainage, any kind of easement on there. The right-of-way line goes basically to the edge there. So you have culvert, a culvert crossing over, under King Road there, and there is no easement that is prescribed to maintain that. And there's a ditch that ties in between that culvert and the existing drainage easement that's shown, that divides the, the current zoning between, on the current property. So that drainage easement that runs down the middle, that is where, that's the dividing line between the CG zoning and the RS 40 zoning. So I would say, I would say it would be important to have an easement along those frontages to be able to maintain the stormwater runoff and drainage in the culverts and any headwalls that are present.
We can request an easement? Can we, is that what, what you're saying, we could ask for that easement to be added? It, they don't-
At this time, are we just sending, sending this to the Board of Commissioners? And then it will come back to us?
No, sir. At this time, you are looking at it as if the zoning is correct, and you are making a vote for one lot to be turned into three, just a three-lot subdivision. That is what our vote tonight is. However, it will not be able to be recorded until the Board of Commissioners makes their vote for the, the rezoning. So without the approval of this board for the subdivision, they would not be able to go forward to the Board of Commissioners for the rezoning.
Currently, this is one parcel?
Currently, it is one parcel, yes.
Subdividing, subdividing into three? So we're reviewing the subdivision of that one large parcel into three separate parcels. And then the board will approve the, the zoning or not?
Micah, two questions. The buildings right there, is that the Fairview Stop and Save?
Yes, sir, that is.
That's the little market there.
Stop and Save, as well as the Brothers Construction building beside it.
Cool. Second question, looking at like our Fairview 2040 plan, were we intending to have like that area right there to be anything residential?
I don't know.
Okay.
I have, I did not look at the 2040 plan. I know that that area is heavily residential currently.
Yeah.
And with the current zoning being RS 40 and CG on the one parcel, it's not really changing what the zoning is of the area. It's just more than anything cleaning up what 10, 20, 30, 50, 60 years ago, whenever it was, could have been cleaned up, but lines were gone off of a drainage easement instead of actually clean cut lines.
Gotcha. I just, I, I'd hate to see someone build a home there if the intention is that that's going to be commercial in the future. Is my line of thought even relevant to the discussion? Be honest with me.
I think part of the problem-
No, thank you. Appreciate you, Mr. Potter.
Part of the problem is it's already considered RS 40 and CG, which should not ever have been done.
Okay.
But through the power of magic, it is.
So currently, they could build there if they wanted to.
Are you suggesting we approve it with the drainage easement added on the highway there? Would that add it in? Okay.
That would be staff's recommendation, yes, ma'am.
Okay, all right.
Make a motion to approve, subject to all the staff comments we've heard tonight, including the contingency of it being approved by the Board of Commissioners, as well as the right-of-way or easements being added on to the highway frontage.
I'll second.
First and second? Any additional discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you, guys. That brings us to bonds, item one.
I'm going to recuse myself on this one.
Ma'am. Audubon Co. Subdivision Bond Reduction, Recommended Performance Bond, $880,054.69. Recommended Reclamation Bond, $313,437.50.
They came to us about a month ago asking for a reduction. Will was out on site either end of last week, beginning of this week, and sent me that this morning for, these are new amounts for reduction.
What are the current amounts?
More than this. I don't have that in front of me, exactly what those numbers are currently.
Yeah, I think, I think the property now has all the water and sewer run, it has the drainage run. They're, they're getting ready to pour curb. So his assessment would deduct the amount from that improvement amount, from what the work has been completed to date.
And it's been signed off on?
That was Will's signed recommendation. Nothing's final yet, though. They haven't, they haven't finished it. They're just, the improvements they may have made now make it less costly to finish, to complete or stabilize. And so they're asking for the reduction based off they've already put so much into making the improvements, if that makes sense.
And I'm drawing a blank. Which subdivision is this?
The one across from the Pool Company, behind, next to Old City Hall.
Okay, formerly the Crylike?
Yes, it is still owned by Crylike, yeah.
That's how I know it. So I was just trying to think which one this was.
So the numbers here-
I do have those numbers for you. Currently, the revocable letter of credit, and that is the only one I do have. I believe the reclamation bond comes up later, but he's wanting to redo the reduction of both of them now. But the letter of credit is $1,570,000 even.
Mr. Blackburn, probably speak better to this, but it's common practice for asking for reductions as work is completed throughout the phases, right?
Make a motion to approve based upon the recommendations by Mr. Owens.
First, second? Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you, guys. We'll move to reports for discussion and information. City planning staff, Mr. Sullivan?
Thank you all for being here for workshop, as well as the meeting. I know we got the workshop started a little bit late, but I do appreciate everybody being here for that. Again, like we've said for the last year now, we are working to get some of the regulations straightened up, cleaned up. We've made great headway, but we still see things that need to be addressed, and hope that y'all are okay with us bringing those before you. And thank you for working with those, looking at those, and working with us for the better ment of the community.
Sir? City engineer, Mr. Blackburn?
I just want to say I appreciate the opportunity to help work with city staff as an outside consultant and to see improvement. Lots of things, I'm starting to see some change made, and that the rules are, are being evenly established, and I think that's the goal, and that's my, that's my purpose.
Sir? City attorney, Mr. Potter? Thank you, sir. Communications from the Planning Commission members. Christopher Burks?
When I first came on the Planning Commission, I remember speaking to Mr. Owens after looking through our subdivision regulations and zoning ordinances and trying to find something that was referenced in another ordinance, said, go see this. And this didn't exist. And that's kind of where we were. I guess three years ago approximately, there was a lot of problems. Things had been removed by vote that were still there. Things had been added that were not there. And I, I don't know how people were able to really do business based upon that. I, I know it wasn't easy. So we asked Mr. Owens, what would it take to fix those problems? Take out what's been removed and add in what's been voted on? Seemed like a fairly simple process, but it's been a very exhaustive process. At least now, we're on equal footing as we know what's supposed to be there. Now it's a process of going through it and saying, okay, now what do we change now that we know what it's supposed to be? So hopefully, the citizens and everyone will bear with us as we go through and start fixing these problems. We've got to cut through Aguardian's knot now that we can actually see what the knot is. So just thank you for your consideration in that.
Sir, Ms. Hulis?
Well, I don't know how to follow up to that, but no, I don't have anything.
Mr. Anderson? Mr. Power? Kelly?
Nothing tonight.
Walsh?
Nothing tonight.
Mayor Bley?
Nothing, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Thank you for asking, sir. I have nothing.
Thank you, sir. Just to continue our discussion real quick on those retention ponds, I'd say there's probably a good chance that Phase 1 of Sweetbrier has a retention pond with the residential lot on it. I think about 75 to 80% of the neighborhoods out here probably do that don't have HOAs. And so if there's a way that we can add language to prohibit that going forward, so, because I think it's, in previous, it's been the way of direction, because it's been done, and maybe our new staff will do, not do that, which is great. But we probably want to make sure we have language to cover, to direct people, to ensure that they know that that's not there, if you guys agree. And after, that's all I got. So I entertain a motion to adjourn.
I make again a motion.